Why I'm not in person. That's why I'm not in person because I have this other meeting I gotta get to.
All right, welcome to those in the room and those online. We're gonna get started here. Thank you all for joining. And this is one of our most important meetings. It's an election year and we get to do endorsements for our Sunnyvale City Council races two, four, and six, as well as our mayoral race. Very exciting time and I I am proud that this club has a process that every member gets to vote on the endorsements. There are some organizations that do it differently, you know, just a small group of people are are involved in that endorsement process, but with our club, it is every every member in good standing. So thank you all for being here and I'm going to hand it to Martin to describe our process today.
Okay, okay. So the process is that. Okay, so we will be interviewing each candidate serially. The candidates will not be and any family members and or paid staff will not be permitted to be in the same room while the other candidates are interviewed. We have candidates have been given the oral questions in advance. They have also been provided with a number of written question, the responses which have been made available to the club. They will also be given as a series of lightning round questions, which will be 30 seconds. Those are 30 second responses. Those have not been provided to the candidates in advance. Please do not, please do not inform any candidates who which you are friends with of what previous of what the lightning round questions are because that will be a lot less fun. And it will be a lot less informative. We all know what the can we. There's a reason the candidates are not given those questions in advance. The following all of the interviews, there will be a discussion period. We will discuss each race in ser- in series. Everybody will be able to speak to to speak to that. I'll get one minute each everybody. Everybody that wants to will get one minute per to speak to each race. Please don't feel the need to speak if you it's important that we hear from everybody, but don't feel that you need to fill the time if you don't have actually something to fill the time because if every single person spoke for one minute on each race, it would take approximately forever and we would never get and nobody would ever get dinner. Uh, the and when we do that, we'll be taking in person. We will start with in person comment and it'll go to online comment and then we will go back and forth as as necessary until everybody's had a chance to speak. If you're online, please use the raise hand feature at that point. But don't use the raise hand feature now. The discussion is for club members only. If you are not a club member, you will be asked to and you are watching, you'll be asked to leave at that point, at that point before the discussion. The interviews are open to everybody. If anybody tries to speak from the floor or something during the interviews, they will be removed. So please don't do that. The balloting, the balloting. We generally ask that you don't vote until you've had a chance to hear the discussion. However, however, balloting is open as of now. The online balloting is oh, is open. The in-person balloting is also open. There are ballots on the table. This is going to, this is the ballot bag. Please put your ballots in the ballot bag. The so like I said, the ballots are open. If you have to leave early, if you don't can't stay for the discussion, you are, it is completely permissible to open the discuss to uh, open the discussion to vote and then leave at any point. But again, we do ask that you if you are able to stay for the discussion so you can have an informed vote. So there are no more than two Democratic candidates for any race to receive any any race we're discussing today. We have there are two Democratic candidates for deep for mayor and for D six. There is one Democratic candidate for D two and D four. In the races in which there are two Democratic candidates, there there is a first ballot and that's the ballot that's open. If neither candidate receives 60% of votes. And that's and that's and that's not including and that that's all votes cast. There that includes no endorsement votes, no endorsement votes don't favor either candidate. If yeah, if any candidate receives 60%, they receive the endorsement. If they do not. For the candidates that were for the races where there is one Democratic candidate, the choices between that candidate and no endorsement. And the candidate needs to receive 60%. 60% for the races where there's one candidate. There isn't a second ballot. Either they get the endorsement or they don't. For the races in which there are two candidates, if the candidates receive, if a single candidate fails to receive 60%, there will be a second ballot in which case they can either vote, which the choice will be between dual, a dual endorsement and no endorsement. If there is and dual endorsement, that case requires 60%. There is the second ballots are not open for voting at this time. They will be open for voting only if they are required. That was a lot. Are there any questions? In the room or online? Okay, cool. If you have questions later on in the discussion section, then we can take them at that time. But okay, so we had the first I had. So we allowed it 10 minutes for discussion. So we're three minutes. So we're actually three minutes ahead of schedule. So whenever Larry gets on, we can kick the kick things off, I guess.
Okay, thank you, Martin. So our first endorsement discussion and interviewing is about the mayoral race. And there are two candidates, as Martin said. And first up randomly drawn is Mayor Klein and I believe he is online. Because he is.
Can you hear me?
Yes, can we please spotlight him?
And Martin, how are you going to communicate the the timer?
Ah, yes, I have the clock. I have the little time clock, little time cards, and I'll be timing.
Can you see?
I can't. I barely can see anything, but it'll be fine. I'll deal with it. I I prepped, so hopefully I won't run over, but it is what it is.
All right, thank you. So as as Martin said, each candidate has a one-minute opening statement and then we will move into the two-minute response questions. And we are recording this meeting. Is that okay?
Absolutely. Yes.
All right. So Mayor Klein, please begin your opening statement.
Okay, I regret that I'm unable to attend today's endorsements in person. I'm representing Sunnyvale at the U.S. Conference of Mayors Summer Meeting in Kansas City this week. It's been an honor to serve as your mayor over the last five and a half years and to have the opportunity to set the example as our first directly elected mayor. I've served Sunnyvale for over 20 years now, including nine years in the Planning Commission, nonprofit board member, council member, and now as your mayor, and I'm ready to serve for another four years. I've worked to increase our regional voice, especially during COVID, doing whatever I can for our residents and small businesses to survive and prosper over the last four years and celebrating and embracing the diversity of our community. There's more work to be done and I'm committed to continuing our progress. With your support, I will do my best to ensure our city remains vibrant, prosperous, equitable and inclusive. I'm a lifelong Democrat and I'm here to ask you for the club's endorsement once again. Let's keep building a brighter future together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Klein. I'll get started with the first question and you'll have two minutes to respond. What are the top three challenges for Sunnyvale and what are you going to do about them?
Sure. The first challenge is housing affordability. Many people are at risk of losing their homes. Supporting SCS and their goal of homelessness prevention is critical. I strongly support a guaranteed basic income pilot to make a difference in people's everyday lives. And we need to continue dedicating additional funds to build more affordable housing of all types in Sunnyvale. Our second challenge is complete streets and creating thriving, walkable neighborhoods. We need to make Sunnyvale safer for residents to get out of their cars and walk and bike and safer for our children to get to our schools. We need to expedite our active transportation plan. I was a big proponent of extending the Stevens Creek Trail and championing the Evelyn Trail Multi-Use Trail. Both of these are finally becoming a reality. We need to give staff direction to do more quick build projects to make immediate change in our community. And in conjunction, we need to make sure that our neighborhoods are five-minute cities where residents have retail destinations and open space that is made walkable through better zoning and urban design. And finally, our biggest challenge is homelessness. We keep seeing additional unhoused on our streets and living in vehicles. Years ago, I partnered with county supervisors Cortez and Semidion to expand Hamlin Shelter to a year-round transitional shelter, also adding another 50 beds. But we need to do more. We need to find places for safe RV parking and safe encampments in our city. And we need to provide our unhoused with real dignity by providing critical services like restroom facilities, laundry services, and mobile showers. And finally, we need to create more permanent solutions. We need to help get more affordable housing built by dedicating additional housing mitigation funds to our affordable housing nonprofit partners. Housing needs to be a basic right.
Thank you. The second question is what do you think are the greatest risks to the health and safety of Sunnyvale residents? What policies would you implement to ameliorate these risks of a two-minute response?
Thank you. There are multiple health and safety risks for residents. I've already talked about the risk of residents for walking and biking safely in our community and the immediate need to make active transportation safer for everyone. Active transportation can also help our community be healthier. Getting outside is especially critical for our youth and our seniors. I joined the move with the mayor's movement earlier this year and have a mayor's infrastructure ride scheduled for next weekend. The cost and availability of healthcare, especially for lower-income residents, is critical. I've been advocating with Supervisor Lee to try to get more urgent care added to the county health centers, specifically on the one at Fair Oaks. We need to continue to add health clinics to make inexpensive health services locally available to residents. Mental health is also a primary concern. 90% of our residents across the country believe that we are facing a mental health crisis. We need to, you know, de-stigmatize mental health issues. Shelter in place during COVID only accentuated the issues in mental health. We need to work with partners to provide supportive services to everyone who's isolated, anxious, and depressed, especially our youth. And finally, climate change is the biggest health risk to everyone. You know, to this generation and future generations. Climate change creates multiple health issues. Extreme weather creates a need for cooling centers in the summer and warming centers in the winter. The smoke from wildfires affects everyone's quality of life, causing respiratory health issues for all of our residents and the need for more breathable air. And of course, sea level rise caused potential flooding and contamination of our drinking water supply. We need to accelerate our climate action goals. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is, we have a council priority for accelerating climate action. What specific actions would you take?
Yeah, as I said before, we need to accelerate our climate action. From a building standpoint, we need to look at electrifying everything to reduce our dependence on fossil fuels. I'm the Executive Board Chair of Silicon Valley Clean Energy and I'm working with them to create more local programs to electrify our homes, adding electric heat pumps for heating and AC, heat pump, water, water heaters, installing EV chargers, especially in multifamily locations, and making it simpler for everyone to add solar panels. Last year, Silicon Valley Clean Energy helped electrify Vargas Elementary, replacing their old gas furnaces and aging HVAC systems with electric heat pumps to both heat and cool their buildings. Silicon Valley is a great community partner and working to electrify everything in our community, including our city hall. Of course, transportation is the largest source of greenhouse gas emissions in Sunnyvale on the Bay Area. You know, it's imperative for Sunnyvale to reduce its dependence on cars. It needs to be far easier for every resident to utilize active and public transportation. For years, I've been a big proponent of the citywide EV shuttle to get residents and employees out of their cars and to their destinations. I was disappointed last year when council dropped that study issue, but I didn't give up. I successfully revived that solution and council approved the city applying for state and federal grants for a citywide shuttle earlier this year. In the fall, we will finally have a Perry Park Ride Shuttle Program. This is the first step to permanent citywide shuttle that will provide a critical service to everyone, including seniors who are afraid to drive at night, to high school students who can't attend after-school programs, and to unhoused residents who need to get to Sunnyvale Community Services for support. We can get people out of their cars and reduce our biggest greenhouse gas producer. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Question four, what should the city be doing to reduce constraints? All right, constraints to increasing housing stock while retaining residents' access to amenities and retail?
I've always been a big champion of housing and I'm one of the founding members of Livable Sunnyvale. We are already upzoning the city in our housing element and I've worked upzone all of our specific plans over the last, over the last 20 years. We need to continue to increase allowable density, especially in transit, transit or did locations. City needs to buy more sites to make it easier for affordable housing developers to pencil out their projects. I brought the old Wells Fargo site to the city manager after seeing it on a morning run and we ended up buying it. Now Mid Penn Housing is looking to build 126 units of affordable housing on that 50-year leased city property. We also need to continue simplifying and streamlining the process to build affordable housing dwelling units. Accessory dwelling units can be affordable and they're and I've always been a big proponent of ADUs. For over 20 years, we rendered our ADU below market to help families, a pilot, a parks worker, a teacher and his wife to have a home in Sunnyvale. I recently worked with Arisa Properties to look at adding ADUs to fourplexes and quadplex sites specifically rented to lower-income residents. And the first unit opened last month. Sunnyvale should look at partially funding and removing all fees for new ADUs if those those ADUs are rented to low-income families, first responders, or teachers. We need to require new residential developments to include ground floor retail to maintain access to essential amenities. However, the state has given that power to developers to waive our retail requirements. We need to change our zoning to give additional density and height only if the developer is going to maintain the retail component. You know, we can't allow developers to create food deserts and non-walkable communities, especially in areas that are currently walkable. Housing is critical. We need to fast-track approval and reduce fees, but and clear our guide, guide, clear our guidelines for transit-oriented mixed-use development. Thanks.
Thank you. Question five, what should be the city's responsibility toward the unhoused? What opportunities should the city explore?
As I previously said, one of our biggest challenges is the unhoused. During my time as mayor, council has finally prioritized assisting the unhoused. We made supporting the unhoused community one of our six strategic priorities. And we specifically hired an unhoused resource manager to help coordinate efforts from the county service agencies and community advocates. Years ago, you know, I successfully advocated with the county to expand operations at the Hamlin Shelter, but we need more. We need to have some input into the operation there. We were blindsided last month, but I've already been working with Bill Wilson Center to provide better services and solutions. We have a shelter in our city and we need to make sure that the county partners with us on its operation. As a city, we need to find places for safe RV parking and sanctioned encampments. We need to connect the unhoused with county health services and get them on the path to permanent housing. But we also need to provide basic food, nutrition, and sanitation. We, you know, have concerned residents delivering food, but the city should look at better sanitation and creating real dignity by providing critical services like restroom facilities, hand washing stations, laundry services, and mobile showers. We need to look at warming centers and cooling center locations. This is especially critical for the unhoused during cold, wet winters. You know, I work with Supervisor Lee to have the county start a pilot program to have our cities provide facilities where the county can set up cots and provide services on the 20, 20 coldest nights of the year. This solution is finally taking shape. Historically, our library has been the summer cooling centers, but during our our summer heat advisories, but with summer air quality issues, we now need to look at getting our house unhoused 24-hour condition locations. We have to do better for unhoused families.
All right, thank you. And this is the last two-minute response question. It's kind of got two parts. It's a little bit long. How will you make city government more transparent and responsive to all residents, including historically underrepresented groups? What specifically would you do to increase community outreach and engagement and remove barriers to participation in city affairs?
So my main job as mayor has been to, you know, be available, transparent, and responsive to all of our residents. I try to make sure that everyone in our community feels seen and heard. You know, Sunnyvale is very diverse with residents from all around the world with different traditions, customs, and language. My job has been to uplift the voices in our diverse community, often being the first council member to ever to go to some of their events, attending many Indian-American celebrations, but also going to events East community, you know, Persian community, and we actually have a large Bulgarian community. When I joined council almost eight years ago now, I immediately started having office hours of Bean Seen on Murphy Avenue. This has been a place to be available to residents and be transparent, meeting with residents, business owners, city staff, and developers there. During COVID, I transformed that into a live stream, which has happened almost weekly for over four years now. People appreciate hearing directly from their mayor each week and answering their questions. The city can work also to be more transparent. We are starting to finally get staff to create dashboards to get people on track on what is actually happening in the city and give them the information that they need. We have the top 30 projects, which I proposed to the city manager, so at least people can see a quarterly update on some of our biggest projects in Sunnyvale. I prioritized outreach to our, you know, cities, non-English speakers during COVID to make them feel seen and heard, you know, to help them know the changing responses during COVID. But I've also worked to try to bridge the language barrier from a city standpoint. I've been working with staff to expand wordly translation services from our Human Relations Commission to all of our council meetings so people can be included and take part. We need to break down equity barriers for everyone in our community.
Thank you, Mayor Klein. We'll now move to the 30-second response lightning round. There are five questions. The first question is, what are your thoughts on a universal basic income program?
So for me, you know, I've been I've on mayors for GBI, you know, I co-authored that, you know, a study issue. I think it's really critical, especially for working, you know, working parents that conceivably are going through college. The biggest issue was going to be funding and whatever we can do to try to to provide as many as much help and to help and to hand up to those in our community that are on that are on the margins. And so I'm a big supporter at the end of the day.
Thank you. Next question is, how important is diversity and representation on the council?
I'm I'm overjoyed that we have the most diverse council that we've ever had in the city's history. And that is attributed to district elections in some part, but but for me, you know, I've been a champion for diversity, trying to be out in the community to make sure that that everyone in our community feels heard, you know, more than more than 50% of our residents were born outside of the United States and that melting pot, that diversity makes Sunnyvale a better place.
All right, next question. Would you support a ban on artificial turf on city-controlled property?
Absolutely. So, you know, this is one of the issues of getting these, getting the study issue going forward, evaluating what the implications of that are, you know, and and what the alternatives are from a cost standpoint and how to make sure that people have appropriate fields, you know, open space, green space, that's that is critical. That's what we provide from a city standpoint.
All right, next question. How would you improve equity and access to transportation?
So, you know, as I was saying before, of course, the the first step of that is a citywide shuttle. It's trying to make sure that those who can't drive or don't have the ability, you know, can actually get into a vehicle and travel within our city wherever their locations go. You know, it's making sure that that's affordable, especially to, you know, lower-income families, to seniors. It's trying to make sure that people don't need a car wherever wherever they are in our city.
Thank you. And the last of the 30-second answer questions is how would you improve equity and access to city recreation programs and public activities? For example, there is no VTA bus stop at the Sunnyvale Community Center.
So it definitely, you know, having good VTA advocates is critical, you know, this, a citywide shuttle will fix a lot of those issues, as I was saying before. But we need, you know, strong advocates of VTA to try to make sure that we get the service that we need, you know. A a regional voice is critical for mayor, but you know, we're the second biggest city in the county and we don't get our fair share.
Right, thank you. And we'll now move to the one-minute closing statement.
Sure. So the role of mayor is about being a leader, setting a tone in the city, and maintaining community trust. Sunnyvale has an excellent reputation as a city and council, and maintaining that reputation is a key responsibility for mayor. The mayor is not a dictator on policy, but a leader with vision. Collaboration with other council members and the city manager is a key to success. I partnered with my colleagues to make them more successful. I've made this job my full-time job from being for being Sunnyvale's biggest cheerleader and its chief counselor. I don't have all the answers, but I'm ready to continue partnering with the community to make a better Sunnyvale for all. Let's continue to to work together to make up a city in a place where our diversity is celebrated, voices are uplifted, and everyone has a seat at the table. Thank you for your trust, your partnership, and your commitment to a brighter future for all. I humbly ask for you to join my team, learn more, and donate at larryformayor.com. I hope I've earned your endorsement today. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mayor Klein. We will now move to the second candidate.
I will be disconnecting. Have a good day, everyone.
Thanks. All right, just momentarily, we have Russ Melton in person. Councilmember Melton. It's just being called into the room. Welcome, Councilmember Melton. Watch your step. We we set the booby trap here with the wires. Yes, please. Yes, thank you. Welcome. All right, so Councilmember Melton is our second candidate and we will get started. We are recording this, just letting you know. Okay, and we'll get started with your one-minute opening statement. Yes. Yes. Okay.
Hi, hi, everybody. My name is Russ. As I was walking into the room, I asked Martin, am I the first one today? And he informed me that my colleague, Mayor Larry Klein, had just been in the hot seat here. And the reason I was potentially excited to be the first one speaking, I always tell my kids AGF. They're in high school and that stands for always go first. When you have to make a presentation, that's what I always did in college. My name is Russ Melton. I'm your Sunnyvale City Council member. It is an honor to serve the community on Sunnyvale City Council. I'm running for mayor. I have talked to hundreds of Sunnyvale voters on their doorsteps in the last two months and the number one concern I hear is what are you doing to keep me and my family safe? My number one policy is safe and secure Sunnyvale, and my number two policy is efficient delivery of government services because you because you work hard for your tax dollars. And I look forward to addressing the questions today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Melton. So we do have six questions, and each one will have a two-minute response time. So first question, what are the top three challenges for Sunnyvale? And what are you going to do about them?
Yeah, thank you. So I wrote down three things here. Top challenge, number one, we must hire an awesome city manager for the city of Sunnyvale. Our current city manager, Kent Stephens, is retiring. I think the question probably was looking for a different answer than what I'm giving, but it's the sole responsibility and the most critical responsibility of city council to hire an excellent city manager, because if we don't, then great things won't happen in the city. You have to have a great city manager to implement the policy of council and set the future stage for, um, development, growth, and excellence in the city. Number two is public safety. I think we need to add more resources to public safety in the form of a burglary suppression unit, in the form of more traffic cops, and I would like to see paramedic services move over from the County of Santa Clara here for Sunnyvale to the jurisdiction of the Department of Public Safety. And then the third item on my mind is budget. And we are so fortunate to have a budget surplus here in the city of Sunnyvale, three point five million dollars for the next twelve months, and two hundred million dollars for the next twenty years. And how your politicians allocate that budget towards services and projects here in the city of Sunnyvale is going to be critical. I've already told you what my priorities are, and that's where my bias will be as we make those critical decisions. Thanks, Martin.
All right, thank you. The second question is, what do you think are the greatest risks to the health and safety of Sunnyvale residents? What policies would you implement to ameliorate these risks?
Yeah. So, uh, number one, I think we need reform to... Okay. Thanks, Peggy. So for me, the number one, uh, item to tackle is reform to Prop forty-seven. Our public safety officers work very hard, and we need commensurate, hard-working laws on the criminal justice side. So we need to close Prop forty-seven loopholes. As I mentioned about health and safety, we need to add more resources to the Department of Public Safety. Uh, the third item on my list is I'm concerned about a rebound of COVID. So everybody, please get your vaccinations, the new one, when it comes out in August. And then my fourth item is climate action. And particularly there, we need to move away from the internal combustion engine. And I'll do some shameless self-promotion. I've said for years now, the next car I buy is going to be an all-electric vehicle. And my daughter just got her driver's license, so I got her a used two thousand fifteen Nissan Leaf. And my daughter is now working through the emotions of range anxiety. I think people know what I'm talking about. So she's a very smart seventeen-year-old girl. And when she realized the full battery on the Leaf will get you eighty-five miles of distance, she said to me, Dad, what is the range distance when we fill up the other car with a full tank of gas? And I said, well, Marina, it's about four hundred miles. And she said, huh, what? I can't go to the beach, but the point is, Marina, you actually can go to the beach, you just have to plan ahead with your recharging station. And so thank you for letting me share that short story about my family and my new car.
Thank you. Uh, the next question is, we have a council priority for accelerating climate action. What specific actions would you take?
Yes. So that's a, that's a great question. We're going to be talking about the Climate Action Plan at City Council on Tuesday. My favorite policy slash action in that is, take charge of our water future in the city of Sunnyvale. Uh, I've been a long proponent of building an advanced water treatment facility in Sunnyvale. This is something that takes, yes, our sewer effluent and ultra cleans it to very high level of purity standards, maybe even to potable standards, through things like microfiltration and reverse osmosis is being done already by a plant with Valley Water. So we know the technology is there. And if we can't build our own advanced water treatment facility in Sunnyvale, I'd like to see the capabilities built into the sewer treatment plant that we are rebuilding right now for an approximate cost of one point two billion dollars. And maybe the state of California will allow, at some point in the future, advanced-treated, recycled sewer effluent to be blended into our potable water supply. That's way off in the future, and something that I'm thinking about and working hard towards. Um, the second thing on my mind here for accelerating action on the climate is, let's implement the Active Transportation Plan. And I have a dream, I have a dream that in the Sunnyvale community, we can get to a point where we're not arguing about what's in the Active Transportation Plan. We put those arguments aside for the next version of the ATP, and we unleash our incredible Public Works Department to implement what is in the ATP. And when we achieve that day, it's going to be fantastic. So thank you.
All right, the next question. What should the city be doing to reduce constraints to increasing housing stock while retaining residents' access to amenities and retail?
Yeah. So, um, that's a really good question. On the housing side of the ledger, Sunnyvale has already upzoned major portions of our land use plans. That's Lawrence Station area plan, downtown El Camino Moffett Park. And we got the housing element across the finish line not so long ago. So we're gonna do all the steps that we said we're going to do in the housing element. So that takes care of the housing side of the ledger. Now we need to talk about the retail side of the ledger. And I have a challenge for Sunnyvale Democrats, which is Sunnyvale Dems, we're either concerned about the future of village centers or we're not. We're either concerned about the future of retail or we're not. I agree with you, and I think that we should be concerned about village centers and retail. And we have to all together critically examine the vote that my competitor cast in two thousand twenty-two on the Fremont Corners Two Village Center project that really put a dent in the city's ability to do what we want to do on the upcoming Duane and Lakewood Village Center projects. Those two are coming to city council in January of two thousand twenty-five. So we need somebody who's cast the right vote in the past on Fremont Corners to cast the right vote in the future when Duane and Lakewood Village Centers come to city council. The other thing I'll mention is my opponent's, uh, policy plan to implement a real policy, real property transfer tax, RPTT, that's failed twice at City Hall. I'm an opponent, and the RPTT would have a very negative consequence of making it difficult to develop and redevelop retail here in Sunnyvale, including a grocery store or more in North Sunnyvale. So thank you for listening.
All right, thank you. The next question, what should be the city's responsibility toward the unhoused? What opportunities should the city explore?
I believe the responsibility belongs to multiple agencies, belongs to the state of California, belongs to the County of Santa Clara. Each of the fifteen cities in Santa Clara County has responsibilities within their own jurisdiction. Special agencies, most notably Valley Water, are doing a very good and difficult job on the unhoused population. And I believe that for great community resources, like the shelter on Hamlin Court here in Sunnyvale, that serves multiple north county cities such as Sunnyvale, Mountain View, Palo Alto. And if there's ever a concept that Sunnyvale should apply some of our general fund dollars towards the north county shelter, that it also must be matched by the other agencies like Mountain View and Palo Alto that benefit from it. That's really important to me. We have so much great work happening. Sonora Court, affordable housing being built by Mid Penn. We did the Block Fifteen ribbon cutting with Related California. Sunnyvale is exploring the purchase of additional sites. We're gonna do safe RV parking. And I'm proud to have stood up for Sunnyvale Community Services when they were having an existential crisis, when Silicon Valley Bank blew up. Uh, and, um, the city of Sunnyvale City Council, uh, partnered up with Sunnyvale Community Services to find a way forward. So thank you.
All right, thank you.
Martin, did I run over time on that last one? Okay. No, I'm fine. Thank you, everybody, for listening.
All right, and we're on to the final question with two-minute response. How will you make city government more transparent and responsive to all residents, including historically underrepresented groups? And what specifically would you do to increase community outreach and engagement and remove barriers to participation in city affairs?
Yeah, thank you, Crystal, for that question. Um, I'd like to say I think all, um, of your political candidates that you're talking to today put them to the challenge to do what I'm doing. I get out there and I precinct, and I knock on doors a minimum of three hours every day for at least five days a week. I'll do more if I can. Uh, and I'm out there talking to voters, and, and they are our voters in Sunnyvale that don't typically engage with City Hall. So these are really meaningful conversations, I feel, that I'm having when I, when I talk to them and ask what's important to them. I think our Human Relations Commission is doing a great job, that the city of Sunnyvale is doing targeted multilingual outreach. We've done some great work with multilingual AI translation capabilities. Um, and one of the outcomes of the pandemic was the use of Zoom for remote participation in meetings. And I'd like to see Sacramento do some things with the Brown Act to make that easier for Sunnyvale and other cities to do. So those are some of the things that I'm doing personally, um, and that I'd like to see Sunnyvale continue to make forward progress on. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So we're gonna move into our lightning round questions, each with a thirty-second response. And there are five of them. First is, what are your thoughts on a universal basic income program?
Yes. Uh, UBI is going to be incredibly controversial in the city of Sunnyvale. And there are going to be residents who will stand up and say, wait, you're gonna take my tax dollars and do what? Um, I've said into microphones at Sunnyvale City Hall from the dais, I can get on board with UBI provided that it is targeted to children, to young children. You want to get Russ Melton to vote yes on UBI, that's gotta be the focus area in my book. So thank you.
All right, thank you. The next question, how important is diversity and representation on the council?
Massive. We've now completed implementation of districts in Sunnyvale. The absolute benefits that I see is that it brings a far more diverse city council. When I started on council in two thousand sixteen, it was a bunch of white guys like me, roughly between the age of fifty and sixty, and now we have much greater diversity. Uh, and I attribute that to district elections. One of the things that I think about with district elections is that, um, we absolutely have to bring up strong candidates within each of our districts. That's the key to success. Thank you. Thanks, Martin.
All right, and the third question, would you support a ban on artificial turf on city-controlled property?
Yes. Uh, already, um, have done with Lakewood. I remember when the Lakewood advocates first reached out to me. I had put zero minutes and zero seconds into the concept of natural grass versus artificial turf. And I remember sending an email to the advocate saying, I just need some time to get up to speed. Uh, but once I got up to speed with a lot of help from staff and the advocates and learning, um, I believe, um, that we made the right decision on Lakewood. I'm hearing that at Fair Oaks Park, there are unforeseen consequences of maintenance issues on the artificial turf we have out there. So thank you.
All right, and second to last question, how would you improve equity and access to transportation?
I'm a fan of the study issue that we have. I'd like to say that it's underway. It's approved, it's funded. I understand that there are some issues getting it off the launchpad. But this talks about how we get our Fremont High School students to high school in morning and safely back home at night, given the distance and the challenges of that lengthy commute. And as soon as you start to unpack that discussion, you get into the decision of the high school district forty years ago. And it's a really deep conversation. Thank you.
All right, and the last of our thirty-second response questions. How would you improve equity and access to city recreation programs and public activities? For example, there is no VTA bus stop at the Sunnyvale Community Center.
I know the clock is ticking here, and I want to give you the best answer that I can. To me, I'm gonna say outreach. I'm gonna say outreach. I think the, for example, that you provided, Crystal, is also a good one. We have to work with city resources, for example, the shuttle that we're discussing, or with VTA to provide better transportation options within the city. But I'd also like to do more outreach, multilingual outreach, multi-channel outreach, to just make sure that everybody is aware of the services that we have available. So thank you.
Right, thank you, Councilmember Melton. We'll now move to your one-minute closing statement.
Yeah, thank you. Hey, everybody, it's been great to be here. Thank you for having me. Before I walked in, I just spent a minute or two on the phone with my wife, Sammy. She's incredible. I love her very much. Uh, she lets me do politics, she lets me run for mayor. We have a great partnership, and she said to me, Russ is gonna be over in the blink of an eye. And I just have to say, thank you for your patience. It truly does go by very fast when you're up here. And you're gonna hear from a lot of great candidates today. And, um, I look forward to the outcome of your deliberations and hope that you choose to endorse Russ Melton for Sunnyvale Mayor. You can learn more about me on my website, which is meltonforsvmayor.com. Thank you again for having me here today, and I really appreciate all the great work that's done by the Sunnyvale Democratic Club. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much. Yes, that's...
Wonderful. Thank you. Mike, I'm gonna hand this back to you.
Yeah, watch your step, please. We have a trap here with cords. All right. Thanks so much. We will now transition to, um, the District Two candidate, Alyssa Cisneros. I believe she's outside, and we're calling her in. She's here in person.
I just looked at my super job. I'm just gonna lie.
Oh.
We're actually extremely worried by ourselves. They might...
All right. Here, enter microphone. All right, and we've got a camera right here. We're being recorded. To, uh, welcome Councilmember Cisneros to our, uh, endorsement meeting. And, uh, thank you so much for being here. Uh, we have, um, well, we'll start with a one-minute opening statement, followed by, uh, six questions that have a two-minute response, and then five questions that have a thirty-second response. All right, so go ahead with your opening statement.
Absolutely. Hello, Democratic Club of Sunnyvale. It is a pleasure to be here, and it's an honor to be considered for this endorsement and to be considered for a second term on council. The, these last four years have been some of the most meaningful in my life, because I'll tell you why I decided to run originally and why I'm running for reelection. Because this is a tremendous opportunity to make people's lives tangibly better in a very meaningful way in the city where I grew up. And that opportunity does not come along every day, and it isn't available to many people. So when I had the opportunity to run in two thousand twenty, in the middle of COVID, I took it. And now that we've made it through that crisis, and I'm honored to have been part of our recovery process as a city where we were able to maintain a balanced budget with... as a city where we were able to maintain a balanced budget with minimal cuts. And we are now able, we're enjoying the work of a surplus. Yes, I could go on.
Unfortunately, we have many questions for you to go on. All right, the first question with a two-minute response, what are the top three challenges for your district, and what are you going to do about them? How will you balance the needs of your district with the needs of the city?
Thank you for the question, and I'm really happy to say that Crows did not make this list this year. I can't take credit for that. The top three issues in my district are very similar to the issues felt throughout the city, and those are housing affordability, traffic safety, and economic development and vibrancy. And all of these issues must be taken holistically and not wanted at a time in order to be effective. As far as housing affordability goes, making it easier to build new development, especially transit-oriented development in difficult economic times. Traffic safety includes, following up on my study issue about traffic calming measures and even expanding it from residential neighborhoods to connector streets and arterials. And economic development and vibrancy includes making sure that we are doing a really good job on the other two. Because in order to have continued vibrant retail and vibrant office-based opportunities, you need to make sure that you are having safe ways to get to those places, easy access, and also people to actually go and patronize these places and make the city a desirable place to build and develop new businesses, specifically some of these smaller startups, mom and pops. And we could do that as a city by reducing the barriers to starting those businesses, including having at-home businesses more accessible and looking at different places to put retail. Residential neighborhoods is an untapped resource that is close to people where they can walk and enjoy having immediate access to those kinds of amenities, like grocery stores and pharmacies, enabling people to really live a better quality of life.
All right, thank you. Second question, what do you think are the greatest risks to the health and safety of Sunnyvale residents? What policies would you implement to ameliorate these risks?
Thank you, and I, the, the top concern for me is something that I don't think we've discussed in Sunnyvale until recently, especially because this number is very low when you look at it, and that's of poverty. That's of economic insecurity. It's not captured adequately in that five percent number because that's a federal poverty line. At Sunnyvale is, I don't think this is normal, this kind of impact. But what I like to look at to measure this is the amount of money people spend on housing compared to their overall income. And I think that you'd be surprised to know, and maybe not so surprised unfortunately, that thirty-five percent of renter households are rent burdened, spending more than between thirty and fifty percent of their income on housing. That's not just a renter problem. A full eighteen percent of homeowners spend more than fifty percent of their income on housing. So, these folks are a couple unlucky months, a medical accident, a job loss away from potential homelessness. So, addressing those concerns by continued and dedicated partnership to Sunnyvale Community Services, homeless prevention, intervention, and a growing menu of support for those who are experiencing homelessness, to make sure they're able to get back into houses. And then serious consideration of whether we may implement a UBI program, because that takes away that couple months of of insecurity. And then I want to talk about regional crime. We're a very safe city, and we're very fortunate to do that. But residents' perception of safety is a critical component of having a health and safety throughout the entire community. We face a significant amount of property crime, not compared to the other ci, other cities around us. But if people don't feel safe in their neighborhoods, it's very difficult for them to get out into the community and connect, which ultimately builds more safety.
Thank you. Next question, we have a council priority for accelerating climate action. What specific actions would you take?
Our climate action plan is really robust, and so I decided, rather than try to rush through a menu of five to ten things that I think are seriously important, I'm going to focus on one, and that is carbon emissions. This accounts for the bulk of our carbon emissions and goals that we have as a city. And there are a number of ways to do that, in particular engaging in policy that is centered around behavior change, getting people out of cars and into, onto bikes, onto sidewalks, using public transportation. That's hard because changing behavior is harder than other kinds of policies. Things that we could do about that, engaging and implementing a shuttle system connecting, connected with Cupertino and Santa Clara's programs. That's something we've been discussing as council. Also making, upping our bike lane game to be in class four with the actual bollards protecting cyclists, to make it feel safer and be safer for people who can do that. And then having more shade alongside walks, particularly among connector streets and arterials, where people often don't walk because of that sun exposure. And that's one thing the city can do to go ahead and drastically increase whether people decide to walk or bike or drive somewhere. I'm also looking forward to partnering with Valley Water for an East Channel Trail that'll take all the way from, people all the way from north to south Sunnyvale without having to interact with traffic. That's a long-term program, but we have to start on it immediately if we want to be serious about climate action and reducing the greatest barrier to meeting our climate goals.
Thank you. Next question, what should the city be doing to reduce constraints to increasing housing stock while retaining residents' access to amenities and retail? What are the particular housing problems in your district, and what would you do to stop displacement?
Density is the only answer to this question. Well, we, we need to remove barriers to building more houses, housing, including fourplexes in resident, existing residential neighborhoods. And a really good example of this is if you go to District Two, and actually, if you want to reach out to me, I'd love to do a little walking tour of it with you, because I'm really proud. We have single-family homes, fourplexes, duplexes, condos, but every apartments, every kind of housing type you can imagine in one neighborhood. There's plenty of parking. You can do this in a way that makes a lot of sense. It is great for the community. And what I would like to see is that effort more widespread in our community as well as having access to those grocery stores, as I was discussing. We can also make sure that we are, and I'm proud to have pushed for this in the housing element, reducing park fees and other barriers to construction, while also working with city staff to make sure we have the resources to continue delivering services in an excellent way.
All right, the second to last of the two-minute questions, what should be the city's responsibility toward the unhoused? What opportunities should the city explore?
And I keep talking about things that I'm really proud of, but I think this is actually the appropriate venue for me to do a little brag. I have pushed harder for our engagement and support for this community than anyone else on council. And I've done that when it's been really unpopular, and I've done it when there's been a lot of opportunity. And I'm really happy to say that we are in a place where we have opportunity. First thing I want to say is the, our unhoused neighbors are residents. They can vote in our elections. They can have residency in our city. And we need to make sure that we are indeed treating them as full residents, which they are. They have a lot of specialized needs. We have different studies already under, underway in the city, safe parking, potential sanctioned encampments, engaging a new service provider to do direct outreach, but we have to go farther. We have to find a way to reach people who are recently unhoused. And actually, it's easier to do a rapid rehousing program for them. The longer that you remain unhoused, the harder it is to get people into new housing, which we have to build it, so it all goes back there. But also people who are chronically unhoused and, and have difficulty working within a system due to trauma. And each of these people deserves all of the consideration of their well-being that any other residents would have. I'm really proud of the, one of the first study issues I put forward was to hire, hire a homeless services manager. So, we actually have somebody right now who's in charge of identifying those opportunities, bringing them to council, and then getting the resources to implement them. And I think really taking advantage of that opportunity and expertise brought by that person and giving them the support via staff and via budget to leverage our current resources and expand the resource pool that we have to find those innovative ideas that work for other cities and bring them here.
Thank you. And the last of the two-minute questions, how will you make city government more transparent and responsive to all residents, including historically underrepresented groups? What specifically would you do to increase community outreach and engagement and remove barriers to participation in city affairs?
This one hits home for me. I am the first Latina to serve on city council. I'm only the second person of Hispanic descent to ever serve on that council, and the last person was thirty years ago. So, when we're talking about inclusion in city government, I look at, why was I the only one? When my group, like the group that I come from, people who have my heritage represent thirty percent of the city. Why? And that is because, and I've done a lot of thinking about this and then taken as much action as possible. There are structural barriers and lack of city engagement on issues that directly affect that community, and that has to change. A key component of that is identifying community leaders who don't just look like, you know, presidents of clubs. They look like people who are engaged with their neighbors, who are organizing carpools and talking to people, posting on Nextdoor to some extent. Just look at that definition differently and continually engage them. Also, city staff needs to be very visible in these communities, at these events, but also in school communities where you really see more parental engagement and thus opportunities for community engagement. And then finally, you know, I, another one of my early study issues was the Human Relations Commission, where we have the first and only monolingual Spanish speaker serving in leadership in the city. They should not be the last one, and the best way to do that is make sure that every single council meeting, every single city meeting has language services that work. Because you can't engage if you can't understand what's happening in front of you. And the voices of those communities are very important, and that continued engagement, just these touchpoints, creating them all over the place is how you identify those leaders and actively welcome them into your government processes.
Thank you so much. The next is a lightning round of thirty-second response questions, and there are five. First is, what are your thoughts on a universal basic income program?
I touched on that in my answers, and you know, this is a really tricky one to do because it's expensive. It's really expensive, and you really have to chase down federal and state dollars that may or may not exist and may or may not have a sunset. But we know just empirically that it's effective in making sure that the people who I talked about that are just a couple months away from potential homelessness, just a couple months away and like, an accident could make it so that, in ways of facing economic disaster, have that bridge. And two hundred dollars a month can make the difference there in a significant way.
Thank you. Next is, how important is diversity and representation on the council?
I may be a little biased. But look, the decisions that we make are only made better when you have people who come from different backgrounds, who have different life experiences, contributing the perspective that can only be gained from those experiences into the policymaking process. Also, one of the ways we increase diverse leadership or connection with historically underrepresented communities is by people seeing somebody who looks like them, who comes from their background right there on the dais. That means a lot more than is given credit for.
Thank you. Third one is, would you support a ban on artificial turf on city-controlled property?
Absolutely, absolutely. If you Google effects of artificial turf, you're going to be hard-pressed to find something that is not published in the top ten pages of Google results by somebody or some company that sells artificial turf. I've gone out and seen it firsthand. The Heat Island Effect is a serious health and safety consideration, but also the PFAS chemicals that necessarily go from those fields and into our water system has untold future effects on the health of, of people in our community. So, absolutely, absolutely.
All right, next is, how would you improve equity and access to transportation?
Equity and access to transportation, more so than lowering the cost of actually using transportation is the availability and the headway time. Having the, more at, like, having the, the public transit actually run more often is more likely to get people using public transit because it becomes more convenient. Also, working with our transit agencies, we actually don't have a lot of control on that, but we do have the ability to have a say in these matters and coordinating those, those onboarding and offboarding times to be more efficient.
All right, and the final thirty-second. No, I'm sorry, there are six. It's the second to last. How would you improve equity and access to city recreation programs and public activities? For example, there is no VTA bus stop at the Sunnyvale Community Center.
Yeah, that's wild to me because it's not just, like, equity and access. That also includes our older neighbors and residents. That, we have our senior center there, which is a major touchpoint for that community who is often isolated. So, a bus, bus stop, the shuttle that I was talking about can have a lot of access focused there because, like I said, we, we don't control that. VTA controls that. But additionally, we need to make sure that we are offering low cost to the, to those as well, in, including what I mentioned before.
All right, and the final thirty-second response question, how do you plan on maintaining communications with your constituents?
Absolutely. I give out my cell phone number all the time. And that is the way that I'm able to engage with people in real-time issues. I, I have people sending me photos of what's going on in their neighborhoods, and I'm able to bring that directly to city staff and have, like, be, I'm, I'm the complaint department for my district. Okay? I don't hear a lot of positive feedback, but when you're making a connection via text, you're able to get that positive feedback, which is also really important to knowing what we're doing well. And also liaising with city staff, which figuring out city bureaucracy is hard. But I fortunately know how to do it, and I'll do it on their behalf.
Thank you so much. We will now move to your one-minute closing statement.
I'm doing this because I want my children to be able to live in Sunnyvale. And I reject the notion that we should raise children without a hometown or an ability to come back here, which is the unfortunate fact today. And so, I take my privilege and my ability to be on this council very seriously in offering my opinions when even it's really hard, and especially the ability to uplift new leaders is something that I have as, as even a bigger focus in my second term, now that I've gone through the process in the city a couple of times. I bring expertise. I'm a professional policy analyst. I have a master's degree in public policy. I'm the only trained policy analyst on council. And being able to take advantage of my training and my professional expertise in a way that makes people's lives better in a tangible way is something that I need support to do. And, and I'm honored to be part of this club and have, and I hope to have your support.
All right, thank you so much. And this concludes our interview with Commissioner, Councilmembers Cisneros. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you all. Thank you, Crystal. You're so good at this. Please go that way.
All right. That was our um only candidate interview for the District Two seat. And now we are going to move on to our District Four candidate. Uh, again, same only one candidate for District Four to interview. So we are welcoming her in right now. She's also here in person. All right, this is uh Charlie Chang. Welcome to the Democratic Club of Sunnyvale, our endorsement interview for City Council Seat Number Four. And um this is being recorded, so thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All right, and so as mentioned, we have a, a one-minute opening statement followed by uh six questions, which you'll have two minutes to respond. And then a lightning round of six questions with thirty second responses and uh finally, a one-minute closing statement. All right, when you're ready, you can start with your opening statement.
Okay, great. Thank you, everyone, for having me today. My name's Charlesy Chang. I'm running for Sunnyvale City Council District Four, so it's the southeastern district bordering Santa Clara and Cupertino. Um Councilmember Russ Melton is uh turning out, so I, it's an open seat and I'm currently the only person running for it. Uh, previously, I, I'm a lifelong public servant. Previously, previously, I worked at a community choice aggregator at the County Board of Supervisors for Supervisor Joe Semidion in the state legislature, and now I work in public transportation. So I want to now bring that experience to the city so we can work on developing, uh work, building on the work that's already been done and so that we can have a city that's, that's livable and everyone can thrive.
Thank you so much. All right, the first uh two-minute response question is, what are the top three challenges for your district? And what are you going to do about them? How will you balance the needs of your district with the needs of the city?
Thank you. So I, some of the top challenges from talking to residents is one, public safety, but that also includes walking and biking. Um, there, for District Four, there's a lack of sidewalks and it, it makes it dangerous to even walk in the streets, to walk to school. Um, and there's just a lack of infrastructure. Um, and we are seeing too that there's a lack of um good public transportation to get people where they need to go. And so that includes um different microtransit options, including the shuttle, uh working with VTA to improve the current routes um and helping residents uh getting to their, uh, so which will help a lot of residents get to their medical appointments and, and different things. So that's the first issue. Second, of course, is affordability. Um, where I live, uh, in the zip code nine four zero eight seven, I'm a renter, but um the median house that's being sold is two point eight million dollars right now, so it's not a house I can afford in any time soon. And we're seeing um inequality just increasing as time goes on. So affordability, helping protect residents staying in their homes and then making sure that they can continue to live here if they want to live here. Uh, but we, of course, we want them to live here. And then third, um supporting our small businesses. Um, you know, we're seeing there's going to be an increase in housing development that I'll get into a little bit later. Uh, especially in South Sunnyvale, too. Um, so making sure that we can protect our small businesses so people can access groceries and retail uh where they are.
All right, thank you. Uh, the next question is, what do you think are the greatest risks to the health and safety of Sunnyvale residents? What policies would you implement to ameliorate these risks?
Yeah, so a lot of the risks are similar to the challenges that we're facing. So as I mentioned, um with the lack of transit and transportation and, and see, uh, infrastructure that uh promotes walking and biking. We're seeing a lot of, especially in District Four, multi-generational families. And what we're seeing is that their parents who move here with them, they're not really able to get to where they need to go and they're end up staying in their homes or they're not able to drive. And as we're seeing our population age, um, a lot of people aren't going to be able to drive, so we really need to focus on building out that infrastructure. Um, for health and safety, um, you know, I take transit most of the time, but even for me as an able-bodied person, when I rock run across El Camino, it's a dangerous intersection and especially for people who might have mobility challenges. Um, so if they, if they are starting to age in place in their homes um without access to be able to get groceries, without being able to get out, we're actually seeing, um the Surgeon General said that social isolation has the same health impacts of smoking fifteen cigarettes a day. So what we're seeing is that people, as we're starting to age, we're not having the infrastructure that's, that's building out for them um to be able to comfortably stay in their homes and also get out to where they need to be. So really investing in um transportation options. Um, and uh some other thing I really want to focus on too is emergency response. And uh, when I worked at Peninsula Clean Energy, we worked on a, a battery program for people with medical devices like oxygen tanks. Because here we have PG&E and we do have public safety power shut offs. And what we really need to do is help residents ship from diesel backup generators, but also so that they have the batteries so that they can use their medical uh devices at home if they need to.
Right, thank you. Uh, we have a council priority for accelerating climate action. What specific actions would you take?
So um, really great question. Uh, so there, there's a lot of things that I want to talk about, but uh for first is um the, like California, um, the biggest carbon emissions from Sunnyvale is from transportation. So we really need to um implement the active transportation plan and supporting all the avenues that can implement the program. Um, we also really need to um electrify more. Uh, I know that, you know, with, with new electric, new buildings, the reach codes have been paused for now, but there's still a lot we can do with existing infrastructure, um, including going to a new library, the, with uh lead platinum. A lot of the homes um changing to electric uh electric you two, I'm trying to, like, electric stoves, heat pump water, you know, different appliances. Yeah, um, and you know, and there's, there's people that are, they're, they're saying, you know, what's going to happen in, in the case of a blackout? How are you going to use those appliances? Which we really should be investing more in solar plus storage, and that actually gives more opportunity to um help, uh, help with the duck curve too, um, for, or lack of electricity during that four to seven P M window. So there's a lot more we can do and infrastructure. Um, when I do drive, I have a fully electric car, but I don't charge at home. I'm a renter. And a lot of the infrastructure, the chargers, there's copper wire that's being stolen out of the chargers, um, the chargers. A lot of them are down, including the ones at City Hall have been down for many weeks. Um, so just improving the infrastructure we have now too, so that more people can transition to electric cars, to biking and to walking.
Okay, thank you. Um, next question, what should the city be doing to reduce constraints to increasing housing stock while retaining residents' access to amenities and retail? What are the particular housing problems in your district and what would you do to stop displacement?
So really proud our city um had our housing element get through the finish line and we're going to be investing in building thousands of homes in, in the next couple of years. Um, so we are going to really emphasize village centers and um mixed-use developments, but we also really need to make sure that that doesn't co- come at the cost of um displacing some of our small businesses or grocery. We're seeing that with the Dwayne Village Center. Um, you know, there's a lot of issues if, if it becomes fully just townhomes and then the grocery and retail becomes displaced because then where are the residents who already live there? How are they going to access their goods? And then the people who move in, how are they going to access goods? So it's a really big balance for for South Sunnyvale, there is a lot of opportunity um to look at more development for um increased density. Um, there's a great project that was just approved on Wolf, uh, where the Wendy's location was, so more of that, more mixed use. Um, and then also really helping residents helping uh residents stay in their homes, so ensuring the affordability aspects when when residents are going through job loss or there's different programs that that we really work with Sunnyvale Community Services to kind of identify that early on so that they know what kind of support that they can have before they get to the point of um uh losing their homes or becoming.
Thank you. Uh, next question is, what should the city's uh responsibility be towards the unhoused? And what opportunities should the city explore?
So we have a, we have a statewide and a regional housing crisis and an affordability crisis. And what we're seeing in, especially in the past few years as inequality continues to grow, is that we're seeing it um manifest in homelessness. And we, we short-term need to do more. We need to um look more into safe parking and I worked on safe parking in Mountain View with Supervisor Semidian's office through elevating safe parking options, elevating rent stabilization um or rent uh support, rental support. Um, and then long-term, we need to look at how to tackle this as a regional issue because it's not just, it's not just Sunnyvale. And it shouldn't just be if one city does a lot of work, but the neighboring cities don't do any because it, then it just becomes kind of a, a rolling a rolling, you know. Yeah, you know, and I, um, but so there is uh potentially going to be a regional bond measure this uh November and that's, that's really that might not be the exact answer, but more regional coordination in, in those terms of looking at how can we solve this um affordability crisis with our neighbors and with um new solutions because currently it's not working and and we're, we are going to be looking at different, uh, I know there's some different study issues we're looking at, so also continuing on those.
All right, thank you. And this is the last of the uh two-minute response questions. How will you make city government more transparent and responsive to all residents, including historically underrepresented groups? What specifically would you do to increase community outreach and engagement and remove barriers to participation in city affairs?
Yeah, thank you. So I just want to re- um, reemphasize that I think what we've done so far is really important, you know, continuing to allow remote public comments. Um, now we're using translations for AI translations. Those are all really important so that people are able to provide public comment, people are able to um go to these meetings. I think what I really would be interested in seeing more of, so in my job, I work a lot with community-based organizations. And we, we focus a lot with working with our historically underserved populations. And some cities like South San Francisco and Newark, they actually hire promotoras as part of their city staff. And so they actually work and provide information about city resources to residents door-to-door. They provide um the information to different PTAs. They're, they're out in the community providing that information. And I think that would be a really important to look at too, if there's some grant available funding for or, you know, if there's some sort of program we can partner with to look into that. So really kind of grassroots effort because a lot of people, you know, if they're worried about um working two jobs and putting food on the table, they don't they don't have the time to be able to, you know, dig through eight hundred-page documents and try to understand uh every topic that we're, we're going into. So I think really um opening the door uh that way by, by reaching them um through, you know, translated information through um through people that they trust, community leaders that they trust.
Okay, thanks so much. The um lightning round has thirty-second response answers. Um, so there are six questions. First one is, what are your thoughts on a universal basic income program?
I would be interested in uh you um, uh, seeing the pilot, uh, seeing how that uh goes, uh, especially in Sunnyvale. I know that it worked pretty interestingly well in Stockton, so I would want to see how it would work here. So I, I'm, I think it was in the study issue to do it as a pilot, so I would be interested in seeing it as a pilot.
All right, next is, how important is diversity and representation on the council?
Uh, diversity is really important. Um, as a, you know, a Chinese-American woman, it's, it's not until recently, I've seen a lot more people that look like me in, in government. And so now being able to see one of the most diverse city councils in Sunnyvale is the reason why I'm even running is that it, it makes the, it opens, um it kind of breaks down barriers and allows people who might be younger, who might not be traditionally in politics, see themselves reflected and then um make that kind of step.
Sorry. Okay, next question. Uh, would you support a ban on artificial turf on city-controlled property?
Yes. Um, I have artificial turf at my house. Uh, I'm, I don't have a choice. I'm a renter, but um, you know, there's there's a lot of uh environmental issues with it. And then um, I know there's a longer-term discussion, but I'm my, my whole thing is that Lionel Messi won't play on it. We shouldn't let our kids.
Okay, next is, how would you improve equity and access to transportation?
Um, so we are constrained by working with VTA. I say that nicely. Uh there are um different options. So where I work, I work at the Samantail County Transit District, so we we oversee SAM Trans and Caltrain, and sometimes it might not always be that fixed routes are the right solution for people. So we also have microtransit, like different shuttles. So it really would, well, how we re, we did a Reimagine Network, so we uh did two hundred community interviews and surveys and we talked to residents, sorry.
Thirty seconds goes by really fast.
Yeah.
Okay, next is, uh, how would you improve equity and access to city recreation programs and public activities? For example, there is no VTA bus stop at the Sunnyvale Community Center.
Sorry, can you repeat?
Yes. How would you improve equity and access to city recreation programs and public activities? For example, there's no VTA bus stop at the Sunnyvale Community Center.
Yeah, I think um it would be really interesting, and I know we're constrained by our staff at Public Works and with, with the different grant programs, but I would be really interested in seeing, you know, when we apply for the shuttles, is there some opportunity that if it's for a recreation program, like going to city services? If we could actually completely waive the show, I know that's way too early, but there might be other grants available, or maybe there's some funding from VTA or state that, that can help support that. So I'd be really interested in looking more into that.
All right, and then the last of the thirty-second response questions is, how do you plan on maintaining communications with your constituents?
So I am going to be talking to residents frequently. Um, I'm gonna try to knock every door in the district. Um, so we're gonna, hopefully I'll get Tanner by then. I don't really like being outside, but as we um, but after that, you know, I hope to have uh weekly office hours. Um, if they can't, if they can't make that, I'm, um, you know, I'll have uh my phone number available, my email, and then, you know, if it's something like we need to meet somewhere where it's more um easy to meet or if we meet online, so you know, always be available and have office hours.
All right, thank you. And that concludes our lightning round of uh questions. And uh you can proceed with your one-minute closing statement.
Great, thank you, everyone, for having me here today. Um, I'm really excited to be running for District Four. Um, I'm endorsed by thirty local um elected officials, a little over thirty elected officials and organizations, including our assembly members, Supervisor Otto Lee, um, the entire city council now. And so I'm really looking forward to uh working hard and bringing that uh knowledge from, you know, statewide, from the county and hoping to work and bring it to the city. I hope to earn your vote in November.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, so thank you, Char- Charlesy Chang, um, running for to the District Four. So next, we will move on to District Six. Uh, we do have two candidates. Um, our first candidate will be Eileen Lay. And um she is here in person. Just welcome her, uh, watch out for the cords. Yes. Welcome. Thank you for being here. All right, and you get your own microphone. There you go. All right, so we are being recorded and um this is for uh District Six. We have um time for one-minute opening statement and then six questions, which you'll have two-minute uh response time followed by six questions of a lightning round with thirty-second responses. All right, so um if you're ready, please proceed with your opening statement.
Hi, my name is Eileen Lay. I'm running for, oh, shoot, I almost said Sunnyvale School Board. Okay, I'm not running for Sunnyvale School Board. I am a current trustee on the Sunnyvale School Board and I am running for Sunnyvale City Council, District Six. Um, I was elected to the Sunnyvale School Board in two thousand twenty-two, two years ago, and I have proudly served my um trustee area, which very much overlaps with District Six for the past, uh, for the past um almost two years now. Um, I live over by Grocery Outlet. Um, I live in District Six. My husband works in District Six. My son goes to school in District Six. My son goes to school in District Six. I grew up in the Bay Area. I moved a little, around a little bit. I went down to Southern California for college. I came back up here to work. I am aggressively Californian. I eat avocado toast a, as much as you would expect for a Californian millennial. And now my nine year, my, my nine month old baby is doing the same thing. It's fantastic. I can see how he takes after me. I am very excited to potentially represent.
Alright, thank you. So next we'll have our six questions with a two minute response time. What are the top three challenges for your district and what are you going to do about them? How will you balance the needs of your district with the needs of the city?
I think the top three concerns for District Six are housing affordability, which is really something that plagues this entire region and this entire city. Transportation equity, which is something that is in the process of being addressed, but is always, more is always welcome. And then grocery and retail availability, which is again, something that I think everyone is aware of, but everyone is, it's a long process. The first one is something that affects everyone in the region. The second things I think are really because District Six historically has not been optimized for residents. There is a lot of companies up there. Historically, there's been even more companies up there. And now people live there more so than ever before. And there's just the closest grocery store to me, the closest grocery store is Grocery Outlet. But it's like the thrift store of groceries, right? Like sometimes you find a treasure, but sometimes you don't find broccoli. It's hard to say. The closest comprehensive grocery store to me is Walmart in Santa Clara or Whole Foods in Santa Clara. And it's not ideal. There is a lot of people who don't have the, who don't have the privilege of being able to drive those extra, that extra time to get their food. These are all, these are all issues that I think everyone knows about. I think it's issues that are being worked on. In my capacity as a school board member, I've talked about the transportation equity issue for our high schoolers especially. And there has been a lot of movement on that from the VTA in conjunction with other advocates who have been talking about this. It is something that is changing for the better and is something that should continue to change for the better. Yeah, and on the topic of retail and groceries, there's, we'll talk about this more in the next few questions. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Next is what do you think are the greatest risks to the health and safety of Sunnyvale residents? What policies would you implement to ameliorate these risks?
So climate change is one of those things that affects us all. And I think there's a tendency to say that climate change is one of those things that we can put on the back burner for later. But I was pregnant when Roe fell. And if you know me, you will know that my baby is a year or two young for that to be true. So about a year before my son was born, I sat there and I cried and I thought about how the miscarriage I had. I would never know if it was because of all this associated risk factors that came with my age at the time. Or if it was because I live in the armpit of one oh one and two thirty-seven and cars go by all the time. And fumes from those cars drift over to District Six, to my house, to everyone else who lives there all the time. How much of that, of what my family goes through because of that, because of my son's asthma, because of all sorts of other things, is because of those cars? And we can't move a freeway. That's not like on the menu of things that we can do. But there's a tendency to think that this is something that should be set aside for later, but it's all related. Reproductive justice, environmental justice, environmental racism. These are all things that affect all of us and I would argue affect District Six more than a lot of other places.
Alright, to that point, we have a council priority for accelerating climate action. What specific actions would you take?
Have you guys ever seen the picture of Jay-Z and Beyonce on the Shin Konson in Japan? It's fantastic because they're just sitting there and they're, they're zooming somewhere and they are rich people. You know they could afford to like go around somewhere else and do that instead. And I think that's just so cool because the thing about Japan's transit system is that even if you can afford to do something different, you choose to take transit. And I think that's beautiful. I would love to see something like this here where even people who don't have to take transit, where that's an option for them to be able to drive where they want to instead. I've taken the Caltrain a lot with my son. It doesn't, it's not necessarily an economical option. It was something that we just did to hang out because he really liked trains. And it would cost something like sixteen dollars to go for, for us to like go back and forth to Santa Clara. And this is, you know, something not necessarily within the purview of the city. This is a regional partners thing. But I feel like having that, having those regional partners promoting, promoting electrification of cars, but more, more than the electrification of cars and homes, promoting transit and mass transit and getting as many cars off the road as possible, even electric cars. I feel like that's so important to my first, my previous point of the first question of changing the world for everyone for the better, of ensuring a better future for our children. I did read the council's climate action plan and I feel like that dovetails into a lot of my personal priorities and the priorities I mentioned previously for District Six, including the lack of retail space in, in the area. We don't, we don't have a lot of restaurants. There are more restaurants inside Google buildings than outside of Google buildings in District Six. And that's not accessible unless you're a Googler, which most of us aren't.
Alright, next is what should the city be doing to reduce constraints to increasing housing stock while retaining residents' access to amenities and retail? What are the particular housing problems in your district and what would you do to stop displacement?
This is a difficult and complex question because I feel like the more we pushed for more housing, it, it's great to have more housing, but we need housing where people can ideally live and work and shop as well. I am very lucky in that my husband lives very close to the office and he's able to walk to work. And I know that I am very, very fortunate in that. And I'm also one of the very, very few people who can say that. This is an area that's difficult to live in as a Sunnyvale School Board trustee. I know that a lot of our teachers live in the East Bay or further. They can't afford to live where they work. And I know that a lot of people in my district are being priced out. Like they have houses that are worth a million dollars or more than a million dollars, but they can't afford to live there because of the increased property taxes, because of the increased cost of living. And they're being, and they're being priced out. If we build new housing, I think we, we have the upcoming village centers in Lakewood neighborhood, in the Lakewood area and on Duane, and those have more or less been set, which is unfortunate because those are going to be mostly townhouses. There are other village centers and I think council and the city needs to critically examine those and examine the density on those and, and encourage the, to whatever extent is possible, encourage the development of retail as well as, as well as housing so that we can have these walkable cities that everyone wants to live in.
Okay, the second to last two minute response questions. What should this, what should be the city's responsibility toward the unhoused? What opportunities should the city explore?
So I come at this with the perspective of a school board member where every time a kid comes into the district, they're our kid. Like we take care of that kid. I, we have a gentleman in the office at the school district, Paul Slaton, who makes sure that you get to school, no matter where you happen to be that night. So we have kids who maybe are couch surfing in San Mateo and then they, Mr. Slaton will call them an Uber to get them to school. And I don't feel like that level of service for the city is the moral imperative of the city, but I do love the humanity there. Where we as a district, look at people, look at families, look at children and see them as humans, as children, as families, who deserve access to the services that we're providing. So we are, I know that we have talked about, the council has talked about a safe parking program. I think that's a great first step. It's not a permanent solution. I think safe parking programs are fantastic for as long as people can stay there. But we should also explore more avenues for getting people into homes that they can call their own. And that might not be in Sunnyvale, like just realistically, that might not be. But we need to find them someplace and we need to work towards, actively work towards finding them a permanent place.
Right, and the last of the two minute response questions. How will you make city government more transparent and responsive to all residents, including historically underrepresented groups? What specifically would you do to increase community outreach and engagement and remove barriers to participation in city affairs?
I think one of the, I don't want to say positives that came out of COVID, but one of the things that we realized with COVID was how accessible Zoom, Zoom meetings are to everyone. And I love that the city makes them accessible for city council meetings and for boards and commissions. I think that's a great first step. I think there's a lot of people who because of their schedules, aren't able to make these meetings. Like these often happen at six or seven PM at night. And if you are a working family, if you're a working parent, if you're a working person, that's just a hard lift. You don't want to drive all the way to City Hall to watch people talk about things when you could be sitting on the couch, watching people talk about things. And that's just so much more appealing. I could wear my pajama pants. I think that's, I think that's a great step. One small step I think would be great is if the city, this is something the school district does, but we post when we're having meetings on Facebook and it's just such a small thing. But you can just click straight from Facebook where you're doom scrolling on your phone over to the meeting. And that's fantastic because you get, you know, that much more engagement. I feel like the city does a great job. I feel like we could publicize, publicize it better, talk about what we're doing, talk about what the city is doing better. I love that the city has adopted the, the AI translation services for Spanish. I also feel like it might be beneficial to add it for other languages as well. I think that there are a lot of members of different Asian communities, for example, that could benefit from translation. Because as someone who does speak another Asian language, I could understand what you're saying like conversationally, but once you drop into government speak, it's, it's a much harder lift. Thank you.
Alright, thanks. And we'll move into the lightning round, thirty second answers. First one is what are your thoughts on a universal basic income program?
Yes. Positive. I, I feel like, I feel like it's a good program. I feel like there's a lot of research that's been done that giving people money without strings attached does a lot more to lift them out of poverty than, than other ways in which that money might be spent.
Alright, next is how important is diversity and representation on the council?
It is so important. I think I was talking about this a little bit earlier about how hard this is to make this time. And I think that local government selects for certain types of people, the people with time, the people with the privilege to access government, and that shouldn't be the case. Participation in government shouldn't be a privilege. We need to have as many voices as possible contributing to, to the way we understand our city. As many people contributing to public comment as possible, but also people on the diet.
Thank you. Next is would you support a ban on artificial turf on city controlled property?
Yes. I think that I don't know enough about how much artificial turf is where on city controlled property right now. This is a question that has come before the school board. It's, and it's a complicated issue because especially for parks for young children, for the area under swings and stuff. We don't have an ADA, an ADA compliance solution. There's not a good squishy thing that kids can land on that you can also roll wheelchairs across.
Alright, next question. How would you improve equity and access to transportation?
I really support class four bike lanes. I think having those around the city is really important. At the same time, my husband is visually impaired and he lost his ability to ride a bike about ten years ago. Equity and access is, it's something that we need to balance with, with needs, with the needs of the community with, and with the realities that not everyone is able to say bye to a car. There are always going to be people who are physically unable in one way or another.
Alright, next is how would you improve equity and access to city recreation programs and public activities? For example, there is no VTA bus stop at the Sunnyvale Community Center.
There should be one. I think that's something that we need to talk to VTA about. I know that they have in the past been pretty responsive when asked to, to rejigger, for example, the bus routes going from North Sunnyvale to Fremont High School. And especially to the community center where the city holds so many of our rec programs. I feel like that's such an important way to get to the bus. It, it does seem, I, I didn't know that and I'm like processing my feelings about that.
Alright, thank you. And there's one more in the lightning round. How do you plan on maintaining communications with your constituents?
I am a school board member now and I am out and about in my community. I go to, I go to a lot of events. I go to a lot of events as an individual person and also a lot of family events with my family. I, I live here, my husband works here, my son goes to school here and it's, I think it's so important to be out and about in the community, just meeting people and seeing what issues that they have, what issues bubble up and what's important to people. And those, those interactions that you get when you meet someone at Grocery Outlet, I don't think you can replace those.
Alright, thank you so much. Thirty seconds goes by really fast. We'll now move to your one minute closing statement.
I want to give a shout out to the unpaid and underpaid labor of women. I think that COVID really shone a light on that about how much our society works because of that, about this, this invisible gendered work that people do in their homes that no one ever sees. And I particularly want to give a shout out to the unpaid labor of PTA moms because there's a stereotype about PTA moms. You're all smiling because you know what it is. But the thing about PTA moms is that they are, they are, in any other profession, they would be a CEO. They run so many things. They make schools work. They make schools work that people don't understand, especially in California where school funding is so throttled by Prop thirteen. And I just want to say that when I roll into these events that these parents go to with their, with their minivans and with their like super, they're, it makes me happy.
Alright, Ms. Lay, thank you so much for your time and this interview. I really appreciate it. Alright, and we are going to transition again to our final candidate. Alright, we have Richard Leshar here. Thank you so much for coming. And you can sit here, you've got your own microphone.
Is this okay? Not this, but this, alright. Okay, don't kick us, don't kiss it, but alright.
Alright, so we have candidate Richard Leshar here for District Six. And we're being recorded.
Absolutely.
We have time for a one minute opening statement, followed by six questions that you've seen before. And those will have a two minute response time and then followed by a lightning round of six questions with a thirty second response time.
Okay.
And a final closing one minute statement.
Great.
Alright, so when you're ready, you can begin your opening statement.
Okay, so I probably won't take up the whole minute. I did want to thank everybody for hosting this opportunity because it's really exciting to participate in running for public office. And it's rewarding, meeting new people and discussing the issues close to them. So that's why we're all here. So that's, that's my statement. Okay.
Alright, thank you. We'll move to the two minute response questions. What are the top three challenges for your district and what are you going to do about them? How will you balance the needs of your district? How will you balance the needs of your district with the needs of the city?
Okay, so I, my top three, I put I have housing and that's cost and availability, public safety and property crime and equitable development in District Six, accessibility to amenities and city resources. So for housing, I put I have, what does it mean a council member means facilitating the approval process? I get the impression the city takes a long time for the initial application to find occupancy and it shouldn't take longer than once even city council term. For public safety, as a military intelligence analyst, my job was to protect our troops and track all of the bad guy data and share that data with the rest of the army, say, hey, this is how we protect ourselves. So the city crime statistics available to this, to the community is dated by years and years and years. So I will go as far to say that DPS budget, budgeted resources towards improvements in crime data analysis that is timely on a monthly basis that the community can have access to, to implement countermeasures against those threats, basically make other communities the easier targets than Sunnyvale. So equitable development means to me supporting opportunities for District Six to get more retail amenities in our district. I have to go all the way to El Camino for shopping or for grocery stores and I go to Santa Clara to get my haircuts, you know, and it, as a consumer, that's convenient for me. So that's, that's what I have for answer one.
All right, thank you. The next question, what do you think are the greatest risks to the health and safety of Sunnyvale residents? What policies would you implement to ameliorate these risks?
Okay, so I'm going to repeat myself here again, property crime, which I kind of just answered, and the unhoused living in locations not designed for dwelling occupancy. So property crime, again, I'm repeating myself, accessible statistics of more granular reporting for residents to use to inform of, of crime trends and recommend preventative actions that they can take to discourage being targeted. As far as the, the unhoused, this is a larger problem that really needs to be attacked on a countywide basis. My, my biggest point of focus is studying the effectiveness of the programs and repeating the success of what is working in the programs and adjust shortcomings. No one seems to have the all inclusive solution, but we should know what succeeds and repeat it and then adjust fire when resources are not working out and like, all right, now let's try something else. Save the good things.
Okay, we have a council priority for accelerating climate action. What specific actions would you take?
So the solutions must be incorporated into our daily lives. That, that's where the, the big bang for the buck is. The most immediate impact for those actions would be to ensure the new developments follow through on less resource consumption, both materially and energy wise. And a huge step toward that would be supporting that it's ensured that cities facilitates utility infrastructure that new developments can plug into those green policies in mind. We are never going to get to an all electric vehicle solution if the infrastructure isn't there. So eventually we're going to have to retroactively invest in those resources to, to current resort, current buildings and current residences.
Okay, next question. What should the city be doing to reduce constraints to increasing housing stock while retaining residents' access to amenities and retail? What are the particular housing problems in your district and what would you do to stop displacement?
So first off, residential volume needs to be added as expediently as possible, right? I'm a student of finance and being financed and like, we want the Vegas solution. We want overdevelopment and it crashes housing prices, but we don't have the real estate to just pop them up all over the place. You know, I, I think residences should stay the residences they are, right? Single family homes should not be turned into duplexes and mobile homes should not be turned into apartments. That's not necessarily the case. And I understand there's no stopping that from happening, but the overall residential footprint needs to be larger as well as, as denser. New housing, regardless of density, needs to incorporate respective amenities needed for those developments. For example, like I had said, all the green efforts of living and using less, less energy is out the door. If I stop to get in the car and drive all the way down El Camino, I've now defeated my entire green home by getting in the car. And I, I hate to say it, but to facilitate development needs to address the final financial incentives to developers to allocate their project priorities to Sunnyvale, right? Give them, change the system in whatever way that their financial analysis of, oh, we should do this Sunnyvale first. We're going to get more money sooner. Yes, ma'am. Okay, all right. I'm sorry. They don't want the echo. All right.
All right, thank you. The next question is what should be the city's responsibility toward the unhoused? What opportunities should the city explore?
Okay, the city's responsible, responsibility is to strive to constantly reduce the unhoused, right? That's just the general goal that I think everybody can't disagree on. The city should participate in larger regional county programs and continuously measure the effectiveness of all programs striving to reach the unhoused. You know, I'm repeating myself, right? Continuously adjust them and improve their effectiveness towards reducing the unhoused population. This can't be tackled alone, otherwise it will result in overburdened resources relative to Sunnyvale's. If we have the best program and everybody loves it, we're, we're going to get our disproportionate share of, of the overall county unhoused. So it needs to be tackled on a countywide basis.
Right, thank you. And the final of the questions with a two minute response is, how will you make city government more transparent and responsive to all residents, including historically underrepresented groups? What specifically would you do to increase community outreach and engagement and remove barriers to participation in city affairs?
So per the letter of the law, the city complies with transparency. All the reports that are required are there. They might not be intuitive to find, but, but they're there. However, you know, much is lost in the nuances of words used to describe a plan and the actual outcome of the execution of the plan. I'm leading in the language barrier here, right? Or proposals should communicate the intent and go a long way towards transparency when communicating across all groups where a common language and culture is not shared. Particularly in this atmosphere, there's a lot of reading between the lines of your questions. There's a lot of reading between the lines of my, of my answers. But if you were to take all of those and translate them and then translate them back, a lot is going to be lost in that, you know? So speaking more fourth, fourth kind, right? You know, an observation I, I like to use was my experience in the financial industry. And it's a frustration of mine is the smaller the font on a contract or product disclosure, the more important the words, right? So that's sort of cheating and all the words should be equally visible and equally understandable to all parties.
All right, thank you. And now we'll move on to the lightning round. So the first question is of six.
Okay.
What are your thoughts on a universal basic income program?
That will help, that can help people and it needs, again, I love, if you're going to put in a program, I want it to have material benefit and is a succeeding. And there are people that do benefit from that, but at some point, you know, it's not for all, all time. That would be a different program, right? Those people, the category of people that continuously needed it would, would fall in a different category. So, you know, there are a lot of conditions, all right, I'm sorry, that I would agree with.
All right, thank you. The next question is how important is diversity and representation on the council?
Diversity and representation on the council helps reach the community as a whole. The city, like for instance, having districts now enforces that diversity. It's an absolute necessity, right? I, that's, I guess that's my question. That's the, my answer for thirty seconds, right? Kind of yes or no.
All right, next is would you support a ban on artificial turf on city controlled property?
All right, so that, so yeah, you can go to the video of me ranting and raving about losing my park. But that, it would have to be targeted, right? The, the way the question was phrased like, no, period, no, like if you're going to do a square foot or something here at the end of a sidewalk, like, okay, great, but you know, don't take, yeah, take that out of the parks and, and it's kind of counterintuitive to the green, right? And I'm, I'm pretty confident of the data that, yeah, you're going to create a hot zone.
Okay, thank you. Next is how would you improve equity and access to transportation?
So I partially mentioned that in, you know, in, in planning developments. So yes, I drive all the way to Safeway to El Camino. Well, you can take a bus like, well, yeah, but I'm not going to carry all those groceries back home on the bus. So the, the equity part of it is the, the transportation infrastructure. So if we don't get a high school in, in the north side of Sunnyvale, you know, my kids will have to grow up taking multiple bus trips if they want to get to, you know, the high school is like, you know, that's not good. All right, done.
Thirty seconds is long.
Yeah, thirty seconds, boom, you're gone.
All right, next. Second to last question is how would you improve equity and access to city recreation programs and public activities? For example, there is no VTA bus stop at the Sunnyvale Community Center.
So I put a bus stop at the Sunnyvale Community Center. So that, that, that's, I hate this word, but you know, planning session, right? Where, where is the underutilization and how can we get people to, to utilize that? And is the demand in the community and what kind of sports recreation do they want? I understand, you know, we want to see a cricket, like, okay, I don't like, great, make a cricket. Why can't we do that? So in, in that would, all right, thirty seconds.
All right, and the last of the thirty second response questions is how do you plan on maintaining communications with your constituents?
So I've put myself out there and I've given my phone number, I've given my emails. And I'm, I think I am responsive to those communication channels and I will continue to do so, right? So I make myself available to my soldiers and, and I keep tabs and I have reminders on my, my communications and, and I respond to them. And the quicker you respond, the easier it is to get a fresh response and you don't let them pile up. I know, right?
Nice, thank you. So that's the list of the thirty second response questions and we'll move on to your one minute closing statement.
Okay, again, thank you for host, hosting this event. I hope I have conveyed my connection to District Six, my commit, my commitment to its future and my priority alignment with, with the voting base of District Six. My role as a council member will benefit from my professional diversity such as twenty years in financial investment management, seven years of oversight of a five million dollar nonprofit. My service as a Sunnyvale Personnel Board Member and my time commanding an army reserve yielded a hundred and fifty soldiers with fifty-four million in equipment and fulfilling the military's LGBT inclusionary processes, policies. More can be found out about me at HTTPSvotelesher.com. Thank you.
Thank you so much for, for the time and the interview.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it.
All right, I escort myself out.
All right, that concludes our interviews for. All right. Absolutely, that's where the hand goes. Right.
Okay, so could we please stop the recording?